The January 7, 2020, regular meeting of the Fairfield Education Board of Education is called to order. Present we have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieber, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxicanelli, Mr. Peterson, our student representatives from Fairfield Ludlow, Mr. Graber, Ms. Phillips, and our student representatives from Fairfield Ward, Ms. Solari, and Mr. Murphy. I'll ask you all to please rise for the pledge. And Ms. Lieber, will you lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice, restful holiday and is ready to go because January is going to be a busy month. So we will get started with our student representatives, our reports from the two high schools. We'll start with Fairfield Ludlow. We have a new student representative with us tonight, Mr. Graber. Welcome. We're really friendly, so don't be nervous.
All right, push to talk. Okay, cool. Hi, everyone. I'm Harrison. I'm new to this. All right, let's get to it. So to start, do you want to do the mock trial one?
Sure. All right. So Ludlow's mock trial team battled out at Stanford Courthouse last month, defeating Sacred Heart and Wilton in the process. We're led by Mrs. Sousa and Mr. Patrick, and under their guidance, the team was able to develop not only the critical thinking skills necessary for court, but the legal language and rules necessary to succeed. We're slated for our next competition on Friday, February 7, where we will all hopefully continue our winning streak onto states.
Cool. So that's good. There's a truth hate assembly coming up this Thursday at Ludlow. I talked to Ms. Sox. It's run by the Anti-Defamation League. It's for all freshmen and what else? Well, upperclassmen students get trained as team members, and they help run the assembly. It's usually a pretty good event, and actually today was training for all the upperclassmen that are running that. Also, I don't know if you want to talk about the esports, but our esports team won a big championship. I think you had notes on that, right?
Yeah, our esports team, which is our other winning team along with volleyball. It's a team that people don't often hear enough about. They play the hit-strategy-based game Overwatch, and Ludlow's players are currently ranked first in the state. They'll be competing at the Electronic Gaming Federation Regional Finals. Winning students will get an $1,000 scholarship to the UConn School of Engineering, which is well-deserved as this highly competitive sport builds strategy, teamwork, and leadership skills that extend well past the screen.
So that's good. Obviously, I was going to say the volleyball girls took a huge win, so good job to everyone over there. As for other sports, basketball is playing Brian McMahan today, actually. I'm not sure if they won. I'm pretty sure the game is around now. They beat Ward by 12. Sorry, guys. But that was good. And what else? Candlelight did a huge concert for the school, and that was a big first thing. And the music department also has another concert coming up this week. It's mainly for freshmen, but all chamber orchestra people, which to my understanding are the really talented ones, are also helping, so that'll be good, too. What else do you have there?
Yeah, we also have, last but not least, the gap year fair. So tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:30, Ludlow will be hosting, as I said, a gap year fair with a variety of representatives from across the world, boasting everything from internships in Washington, D.C. to non-traditional classroom experiences in the Galapagos. Students and parents will be able to explore a wide variety of gap year options. At around 6:45, a speaker is scheduled to present on the reasons why many students choose to pursue gap years, the benefits, and how to enjoy the time off while still being career and college-oriented. So we're looking forward to that. Thanks.
Thank you. What's going on at Fairfield Ward?
Well, first off, we wanted to offer our congratulations to the Ludlow volleyball team. I know we're from Ward, but that's an awesome accomplishment. We're also looking to maybe get a win in the next basketball game, but we'll see later on in the season. We also hope everyone had a great winter break and a happy new year. This Friday, we will be having our winter sports pep rally. We are excited to kick off the winter season, and we wish all of our winter athletes the best of luck. Our first semester is coming to an end, and our second semester, semester, I'm sorry, will start on Tuesday, January 28. This means that some of the students' schedules will be changing with new free-period study halls or new half-year classes. And on Monday, February 3, they will have access to all of their grades available on Infinite Campus, and transcripts will be released for our seniors applying to schools. We also wanted to congratulate our very own wrestling team. Just this past Saturday, they came in first place at the Ward Invitational Tournament. They competed against 22 other teams, and it was a great way to start their season. So we look forward to all they do in the rest of the season.
Oops. Yeah, there you go. Yesterday, the juniors attended an assembly on post-high-school planning. So some students' parents attended, but we also had representatives from UConn, Union, UTI, and Gateway Community College. So that was a great event to help people plan for their post-high-school experience. The Ward Debate Team is hosting the debate at Ward on Saturday, so we wish them the best of luck. We're not going to have school next Tuesday for the special election, but the teachers are going to have Professional Development Day. And this January is National Mentoring Month, so the Business Department is going to be collaborating with the community to give students some new opportunities and help mentor them in a variety of positions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for our student representatives? Okay, seeing none. You guys are welcome to stay, but also welcome to, you know, leave and get on with your night. I'm sure you have other things to do. But a thank you, as always, for your participation and for those great reports. It's exciting to hear about all the wonderful things that our students are up to. Public comment. At this time, we invite any members of the public who would like to speak to agenda items to come forward. Recognition of Fairfield Ludlow High School Girls Volleyball Team. Ladies, I would like to, first of all, just congratulate you. Neither one of my daughters were big athletes, but I went to your championship game, and it was so exciting. It was a thrill. Congratulations on your win, on your teamwork, on your spirit, and we're really excited to have you here. I'm going to invite Mr. Hatzis and Mr. Partes to give some opening comments.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Wanted to just say, if you have never had a chance to see a girls' volleyball game, you need to treat yourself this fall, whether it's on Ludlow's side or the Ward's side of town. It is absolutely one of the most exciting sporting events that you can witness at the high school level. And the thing that I'm so grateful for, for all of these players and the coaches, is that they instill a sense of such spirit in the entire school. I mean, when you see the crowd, when they come out and our nest, you know, cheering section, they get so pumped up, and especially when they go on a run like they did this year, the whole school just galvanizes around them. So we are very grateful to each and every one of these girls. And Mr. Partes is going to explain their accomplishments.
So not only do these girls have such a tremendous season, but they're also just a great group of girls. They work hard. They're enthusiastic every game. They support each other, and they're just really fun to watch. And it's a little bittersweet because we do have 11 seniors this year who we are going to miss next season, but I'm sure they are going to make us very proud next year as they move on to college and other adventures. But to give a little recap of their season, they were 22-4 was their overall record. They started the season off by winning the CIAC Block Party Championship, which is sort of a tournament with the, among the better teams of the state to get the season started, and they were able to win that. Then they went on to win the FCAC Championship with a great game against West Hill that went five sets. It was an amazing game to watch. And then they made it to the state semifinals, which was another great accomplishment for them. So what I'm going to do is introduce Meg Scallon. She's our head coach, who, by the way, also got her 200th win in the FCAC Championship game. So congratulations to her. And she is going to pass the mic down to introduce the rest of the team. So again, congratulations, ladies.
I just want to say thank you for having us. This is such an honor to have. I know all the girls were a little nervous, and we were very excited to have this opportunity. So thank you all very much for recognizing the girls in this fashion. So I'd like to introduce my assistant coaches before I have the girls introduce themselves because I believe in life skills and them becoming strong women, so they're going to do that. So I have two assistants. I have Shelby Sagala, who is a former player for Ludlow, who's now our freshman coach, and Vicky Jenkins, who's also a teacher at the high school. So I'm very lucky to have them. They're a great asset to have for coaches. So thank you, ladies.
You're up first. All right.
My name is Ava Sanborn.
And you're a year.
And I am a senior.
Hi, I'm Kylie Meade. I'm a junior.
I'm Maddie Corbett, and I'm a senior.
I'm Jackie Soderland, and I'm a senior.
I'm Joe Blanco, and I'm a senior.
I'm Jane Ransom, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Gabby Price, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Phoebe Casquinas, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Natalie Riley, and I'm a junior.
I'm Gillian Gerber, and I'm a senior.
I'm Margaret Nolan, and I'm a senior.
I'm Ally Clark, and I'm a junior.
I'm Amy Lumage, and I'm a senior.
And we had 17 girls in total. We have four that couldn't make it tonight, but they're with us in spirit. And we, again, just want to thank you all, and I encourage, like Greg said, come to our games. They're a lot of fun, and it's just a great opportunity to have some culture, and especially the Ward-Ludlow game is always spicy. Never a dull moment. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Actually, while they're here, I want to acknowledge the parents, too, because they are the true.
Wait, wait. Ladies, you're not done yet. We need a picture. Well, actually, no, we think that for now, the...
They're also tall.
What? I know, well, I guess for the picture, we can come in the middle. We wanted to get you over there just for the camera. It was a better shot. We did a little technical conference before. Mrs. Gerber, will you just represent the board for this picture, please? No.
You have to. Why are you guys... This is great. I can get everybody in. This is so nice. What about you, Greg? Oh, I wonder if I can get one of you there. I will get out of everybody's way. I'm so sorry. That's okay. One more, come on. Thank you.
They are all looking at me. All right, ready? We are about to do a presentation of the operating budget, so anyone who wants to stay for that, feel free.
I think volleyball is it.
Historically, the board has not recognized FCAC champions, but things change. We are very proud of our students. And just moving forward, I encourage staff, if there's anything going on with our students that we don't know about that need recognition, please bring it to the board's attention. It's enjoyable for the board to have our students here and just to remind us of why we're all here. Mrs. Maxicanelli.
Just some feedback on that. When was the last time we won the FCAC Championship again in volleyball? So I don't think that FCAC Championships are coming along with such frequency that it would be slowing our meetings down so much. So I would hope anytime we have an FCAC champion, they get recognized at this meeting. So personal opinion.
Just want to really recognize any past winners that were not recognized. We're sorry that we did not recognize you then, but moving forward, we will be recognizing in the future. So thank you. That was a nice way to start the meeting. Mr. Cummings, moving right along. Presentation of the superintendent's proposed 2020-2021 operating budget.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Mike Cummings, Superintendent of Schools. We're going to move to the PowerPoint, and I'm going to change position, but before I do, I get actually into the presentation itself, I just want to make a couple of quick comments. One, anytime you present a budget, if you're doing the work well, a budget really is an expression of values. You're putting money behind the things that you find the most valuable, the things that are most important, whether it's your home budget or a budget that runs the school system. Ultimately, every dollar that we spend needs to be traced back to supporting student growth, whether it's on the athletic field or the court, in the classroom, outside the classroom. Ultimately, that's really what our work is about, in some way indirectly or directly supporting the work of the students. The second comment I want to make is that really the major theme of this budget is a maintenance theme. And by that, I don't limit the thinking to strictly the maintenance of our schools and our grounds. It's a maintenance budget in terms of keeping us moving forward into the future. We are at the last year of a five-year district improvement plan. We're about to begin the next iteration of that plan. In fact, we'll be gathering staff input on that next, beginning next Tuesday, and I'll have a little bit more update on that later on in tonight's meeting. But this budget carries forth the work that was in the last district improvement plan, or the current one, I should say, and starts to set the stage for the next one. And you'll see that the things that we value the most are the things that maintain improvement of instructional processes in the classroom. So one major theme of our budget is maintaining the work that's going on in the classroom to improve instruction across all of our classrooms. And then the other theme is really supporting the classroom itself, the infrastructure of the classroom, the buildings and the grounds around that classroom. So this is a budget that's designed to begin to lay the groundwork for the future. And the last thing I want to say is, and I will not be able to say this clearly enough, in my former role in the Fairfield Public Schools, both when I was elementary director and then as Chief Academic Officer, my role in budgeting often ended about early December. As I've complained before, the structural division budget was often one of the places that people looked to, and when we were trying to come forward with a decent budget number, it was a place that people could pick money out of. But my work really had finished at that point, and I moved on to other things. In the past, this year, in the last month, I've come to have a greater appreciation and realization of the work that our business office, financial office, maintenance department operations do through the remainder of the month, at December, all through the holidays, and even into the last five, six days of this, the beginning of this school year, in getting this budget ready for your presentation tonight and to get it set up for the... And I cannot thank our staff in preparing the budget enough, but again, the work that has happened over the past month has been Herculean in its efforts, and it's been nonstop. And I particularly want to call out Ms. Muncell for her work. It's just been tremendous to watch that happen, and much appreciation for what she's done. So I'll now move and be quiet for a little bit and go over there. One, I'm really uncomfortable talking with my back to you because I should be facing you because this is really a lesson. Secondly, I had nothing to do with this graphic. If it had been up to me, you'd have black text, white slides. It would have been fabulous, but clearly not as fabulous as this. And so much of this credit belongs to Jan Burns in our central office, who put this presentation together and worked on it tirelessly over the last few days as she's accumulated the information. I'm going to go through this. My intent here is to go through this. I will stop at certain slides to talk specifically to needs. Tonight's presentation really is to give you an overlay of the budget, excuse me, and then we'll talk when I'm done, really, about the next steps of the process and how we'll work with the board to collect questions this year and how we'll be responding to those So during the course of any budget presentation, there's quite a lot of work that goes into this, as I mentioned earlier, and none of this, this is popping up in a random fashion, really because all of this is happening concurrently. There's not a linear process necessarily to the budget presentation, but these are all the pieces that have involved our staff, really beginning from the very onset of the school year. We had conversations with the district leadership team at the advance in mid-August around this budget, and the work had already begun on that. And much of the work that they began to do with their school improvement plans is reflected as well in the budget. So this has been a constant process, and will remain a constant process, really, through the rest of the calendar year. So to highlight some of the district goals, as we've talked about, one of our number-one tasks is to complete the 1920, I'm going to just take this down, it's driving me nuts, complete the 1920 district improvement plan and move forward into the next district improvement plan. We continue to use staff teams and data to increase effectiveness of program implementation and student achievement. Our work is always about strengthening the instructional capacity and leadership capacity of our teachers and administrators. We are beginning the 2025 district improvement plan, as I mentioned, very next week, and ultimately ensure that a rigorous, comprehensive instructional program is consistently delivered across all schools and grade levels. And fundamental, as I said before, fundamental of our work is that each of our classrooms continues to improve, each of our classroom teachers, each of our, anybody who's involved in servicing students continues to improve in their work, aligned to expectations for student learning and the curricular standards. Okay, here's your big number. So we have put forward a 3.9% increase. This is for a total budget clearly of $188,758,852. As the board is aware, as anybody who's listened is aware, we came in, as we've talked about and through the fall about our budget drivers, we were essentially starting from around a 3.7% increase. So you will see, as we go through the numbers and what the basis of this percent increase is, that essentially those drivers that we discussed all held true, and we had to clearly integrate those into the budget. And then a lot of the work was about identifying what would be the things that we needed right now to improve instruction across the district, improve the effectiveness of the district. And we made decisions ultimately based on what had to happen now. So this is where our budget stands in relation to the past couple decades. It's clearly two, every time anybody looks at this slide, it's really a tale of two different eras. So what I'm going to present to you now is, this is the overview of the major categories within the budget. And as you can see, each of the, and we'll explain each of these in the following slides, but let's take benefits, for example. Benefits overall contributed, of the 3.9% increase, the increase in benefits was 1.72. So when you add up that column to the right, it'll get to 3.9. You'll see that at the very beginning of that column, clearly, certain categories led to the increase, and then towards the bottom of that list, certain categories helped us reduce the overall request to what became the final number of 3.9%. And again, we'll talk about detail in a second. So the total cost increase of this budget, the dollar amount behind the 3.9% is $7,769,814. And you'll see this now broken out on the different slides. So next up is going to be benefits. So let me just take a moment and use this slide as an orientation to what we've been discussing or what I've been discussing. So the summary object, you can see each of the items below, in this case, health insurance, life disability insurance, social security, and pensions and retirement. Each of the increases in those budgets, in those items, is marked to the right. That adds up to the $3,122,302 total, and that was a 1.72% increase over last year. Okay? So you'll see this same pattern repeat on the following slides. Now, for the board, these are the detail, you'll be getting your budget books when we're finished here. This clearly will drive a lot of the questions as you get into this. So I'm not going to get into a lot of the detail that behind much of this tonight. We'll get into this as we go over the questions. There is some FTE implications that's in these salary figures, and we'll talk about that in some slides coming up. But these are the dollar figures behind each of these categories, these summary object categories for staffing. And again, this staffing salary increases was 1.62% of the, ultimately, the 3.9. So as our, another way to look at our salaries is to think about their work in relationship to students. Nearly 80% of our salaries are direct classroom support. So that's a really important number, and this is one of the things that we continually are conscientious of as we staff the district. This isn't anything new. This is something that Fairfield, I think, has taken a lot of pride in over the years, but how do we put our money into the people who have the direct impact on student learning? And how do we minimize, whenever possible, costs for those who don't directly impact These are the salary rates that we are, or excuse me, the contractual rates we were working with for the 2021 school year. Moving into instructional services. So 0.28% of our increases related to instructional services. Anything with a parentheses is a decrease, so you'll see those mixed in as well. And again, 0.28% on this one as well. So let's talk about transportation real, just real quick, and we can get into more detail about this. I believe this is going to be more the focus of January 21st. But one of the things that was out, and it's still not finalized, but we had, as your board knows, we were seeking a new transportation agreement with a provider this year. This reflects right now what that... as a result of the budget process. So each of the school per pupils was reduced 7.5% from the very beginning of the year, and they budgeted with that reduced amount in mind going forward. We did that in response to where we knew we were coming, how we were coming out of the gate with that 3.7% to begin with, and we were conscientious from the very beginning of setting certain restrictions on our budget allocations. This is a conversation that happened similarly with all the centralized departments as well. It's important always at this time to emphasize the work that we do with the town, and I want to call out, and we highlighted here, some of the major areas where we find that where the town is particularly most visible in its support of the Fairfield Public Schools, but we're deeply indebted to the work that the town provides us. And, you know, if you think back, just even the conversations we've had this fall, certainly the environmental issues that have been raised and the support we've gotten from the Department of Public Works, town engineering, always our police department and nursing services. There's just many, many areas here where we're very fortunate to, I don't know what that is, to work in Fairfield and have the support of the town. We'll be providing backup for these major maintenance projects going forward in the next couple, over the next couple of weeks, next few nights of work. But essentially, what, you can look at the bottom, we've increased our spending on maintenance, on major maintenance projects by $170,000. The board members know this isn't near yet where we need to be, but this is taking care of some projects that have been put off for a number of years, looking to address these and increase the facility, excuse me, increase our facility use of our buildings and fields One of the focuses that we'll talk about in a little bit, and I'm going to get into more detail with you on January 14th, is work to implement, continued implementation of operational efficiencies in the district. How can we do things better? How can we improve essentially the work or our support of the classrooms in the building so that they're as effective and efficient as possible and that we are not creating more work for people that interferes with ultimately what they're all here to do, which supports student learning? So that's something that we've begun to work on. The district has been working on it for a number of years, but we're going to dedicate some more resources to that in the next budget and in our central office organization, which I'll talk about in a second. We are, we'll talk in detail in a bit about how are we supporting professional learning because ultimately the money we invest in professional learning is the most important money we spend on improving classroom instruction, really more than anything else. We've already talked about increasing funding for school maintenance projects. You will see that there's money in many of the curricular areas, most of the curricular areas this year, but there's probably been slightly heavier emphasis this year on NGSS and improving the STEAM program, particularly the K2 STEAM program. As the board knows, the NGSS program has been put off for a couple of years. We don't have a lot of dollars spent in NGSS this year, but we are looking to put some money in. Resources are now beginning to become available for that, and we're looking at ways to increase support for that K-12. And then, as the board learned last month, there'll be work and there'll be some dollars in this budget around working on math, laying the groundwork for changes that will likely come in the math program for the 2122 budget. Let me take a minute just to talk about this. We are going to be looking, Mr. Goodison is working with us to support the idea of how we can begin to base our IEPs on curricular standards and where that is possible to do that. So that's work that we're going to begin to implement across the district. Hang tight, it stops. Okay. We're going to begin to implement that next year, enhancing support for staff in response to student learning needs and SRBI, and we'll talk about that particularly in light of the secondary middle school level. As we've talked about already, providing support for middle school teachers as they move to the block, building leadership capacity at the high schools, we'll talk about that in a second more. We are going to be increasing our literacy training in the elementary program. We're continuing the work that we began this year at Burr, and we're going to add a second elementary school to that. We also are going to be implementing phonics units in our K1 program and the training that will be required for teachers around that. That's a hole right now in our elementary literacy program that has to be filled. We've got, as the board, I think, is aware, we're going to be adding a 1.0 health staff position to the secondary level, 0.5 at each of the high schools, and that's in response to the increased state requirement or the grad requirements. And ultimately, all of this is about continuing to support the fulfillment of the vision of the graduate for all of our students. We're going to talk in more detail about this at the meeting on the 14th. This is how I'll begin the workshop on the 14th, talking about staffing, but I'll spend the majority of that time talking about a reorganization of central office. So there's really three differences in this configuration than what we currently have. And let me highlight those rather than concentrate on each of those. So the, there's going to be a position of, let me take a step back. Right now, we have the executive director of innovation position will go away, the executive director of digital learning position will go away, and entitled, the deputy superintendent role will go away. In their stead will become the executive director of instruction curriculum and assessment, which will have oversight of the pre-K-12 plus instructional program. And at the end of, towards the end of the week, I think in your Thursday packet, I will be providing, by the way, job descriptions for each of these positions for you to review before the weekend. Then there, in place of the deputy role, the executive director of operations and processes, this essentially becomes, to some degree, an ombudsman across the district to work across all departments, to develop implementation plans, improve efficiencies across the department, the departments in the district, excuse me, and ultimately to better, ultimately to develop a fairful way of getting work done across the district. We have a number of things in the district that have long been put off that need to get done. We're still not in the electronic age entirely, and we've got major challenges like the implementation of the middle school schedule, for example, that need oversight. And so this position has been created to essentially bring departments together and develop that across the district. And I will provide more detail on that, the job description, and I also will be providing an example of that, a scenario for you for that on next Thursday as well. And the final position right now is, we are putting forward a 0.5 position for a public affairs officer. Essentially, this position would be a communications director for the district. This would be, the other two roles would require certification. This is a non-certified role. This would be somebody whose responsibility is both promoting the external communications around the work that's happening in the district, but also working very closely with the new executive director position of process and operations, operations and process, to work on how we can improve our communications within the district and underscore and highlight the messages we want to promote in the district to help clarify a lot of the questions that our staff have. So that, there's a dual purpose to that role. As we talked about in December, we are going to put forward, in this budget is a request for a middle school, excuse me, SRBI coordinator for each of the schools. This will be a full-time position dedicated to overseeing the SRBI implementation at each of the schools. They will have direct child student contact as well, but they will be responsible for overseeing the coordination of services across all three grades and the teams at each grade, working closely as a member of the principal's leadership team within the school. I've mentioned already that we're going to hire an additional high school health teacher. We are going to add stipends for high school department chairs to the four major areas at each of the high schools, so eight in total, English, math, science, and social studies. We will have a job description for you for that as well, but these will be positions both working within, with the headmasters of the high schools as well as the program directors in central office to extend teacher leadership in the buildings, to provide for support for those teachers in the major department areas, and to begin to serve as a basis for some type, for instructional leadership, instructional coaching at the schools. So that will be happening at the high schools is what our request is. And finally, Ms. LaSalle pointed out to me early in the fall that we did not have chemical hygiene officers in our high school. We need them. We should have had them years ago. This role is essentially somebody who oversees safe storage and handling of chemicals in our science labs. And it was really surprising to me that we didn't have this, so we've put in this as a long overdue position to put into place, and we will have this as well for you. So in summary, and I want to point out, before I get into this slide a little bit, we are right now operating the district at an FTE of 2.13 below the adopted budget. So our actual FTE right now is 2.13 below the adopted 1920 budget. So keep that in mind as we go through this presentation, the rest of the presentation tonight, as well as we begin to talk over the next couple of weeks. But we looked for savings. We found some reductions was where class sizes permitted some reduction in services. So these elementary specialist positions, for example, middle school language is related to the decrease in student numbers at the middle school level. Similar is the, excuse me, the middle school specials, middle school guidance, the executive director of digital learning position is off of this. And then we've got the additions. We've got the 3.0 SRBI coordinators, 0.2 additional reading position at the middle school because of, based on student support, and then a high school health teacher. The total increase in certified FTE is therefore 0.2. Non-certified staff. We're converting the health desk, one of the health desk positions in the tech ed department, excuse me, the technology, information technology department to a network engineer position, so that's a net of zero. We've added the 0.5 communication director and a clerical staff member, 0.5 in central office. I'll talk more about that as well next week, and that is a total addition of 1.0. We then took one of the non-certified positions off the grant and reduced 0.5, so we have a total FTE increase in the 2021 budget of 0.7. Now, we had a debate internally about where these slides should go in the presentation because we can get really lost quickly in the numbers, and even these numbers, we can lose sight of the fact that behind every dollar that we're spending is a sea of almost 10,000 faces that are really important. So we ultimately decided to keep the slides in, or here, their original position, but I just think it's really important before we move on and we think further and as we guide our conversation over the next month and certainly going forward with the town that we think about who our students are. This is four slides that only give us some hint of the work that's going on across the district. But you can see our total population will get into, I'll fill you up with slides of enrollment in a second. Our estimated enrollment is 9,804 for next year. Currently, and that was based on October 1 numbers from Maloney Group Broome, our EL student population is 259. It's about the same as it was last year, although that's a current number. That was a number that was only drawn a couple of days ago, and that was 16 up. An increase of 16 from the October 1 number. Our free reduced number is up slightly. Our special ed number remains relatively stable, our disability number, our prevalence rate. And it's important to note that with all of this going on, our graduation rate continues a steady climb up. This is where we've been with enrollment. One of the things that I've heard repeatedly since, from August, and it's only from certain people, but I hear it repeatedly, is that our enrollment is going down. And if you look at this, certainly it has gone down over the past few years, but I think that this all is relation to, it has to be put into context, and you'll see on in a few slides what that actually translates to in numbers. But again, if you think about the fact that we have nearly 10,000 students in the district, a decrease of 400 to 500 over quite a number of years is not enrollment dropping. I think we have to really be careful about. I came from a district that lost over 10 years, 3,000 kids. Started at around 8,000 and finished around 15,000. I had nothing to do with it, but that's an enrollment decrease. Okay, that's context. This is, we have to be really careful because when you think about, we have roughly 35 classrooms at each of the elementary levels, right, K5. We have three middle schools. We have two comprehensive high schools and an alternative high school program. We've got quite a lot of classrooms over 17 sites. Losing 400 or 500 kids over the course of eight or nine years is not going to leave you a lot of empty seats. So I think this is just one of the things that we continually have to message and be careful about the messaging. Well, enough, we'll go into the detail. And you will see here, when you look at the elementary, that there's some decline, but then, over time, and this ends in the 2930 school year, we see the elementary level population increase. One cautionary note, and this will be balanced on the last slide, there's four slides in this sequence, it'll be balanced on the last slide, but please keep an eye on the scale to the left because it's going to change for each of these levels. So you can't, you have to look at that visually, and then we balance it. Jim Berns did a great job balancing it on the fourth slide, but I just want to question you on that. So this is the elementary population going out to 2930. Here's the middle. a decrease of 400 to 500 over quite a number of years is not enrollment dropping. I think we have to really be careful about. I came from a district that lost over 10 years, 3,000 kids. Started at around 8,000 and finished around 50, I had nothing to do with it, but that's an enrollment decrease. Okay? That's context. This is, we have to be really careful because when you think about, we have roughly 35 classrooms at each of the elementary levels, right? K5. We have three middle schools. We have two comprehensive high schools and an alternative high school program. We've got quite a lot of classrooms, over 17 sites. Losing 400 or 500 kids over the course of eight or nine years is not going to leave you a lot of empty seats. So I think this is just one of the things that we continually have to message and be careful about the messaging. Well, enough, we'll go into the detail. And you will see here, when you look at the elementary, that there's some decline, but then, over time, and this ends in the 2930 school year, we see the elementary level population increase. One cautionary note, and this will be balanced on the last slide, there's four slides in this sequence, it'll be balanced on the last slide, but please keep an eye on the scale to the left because it's going to change for each of these levels. So you can't, you have to look at that visually, and then we balance it. Jim Burns did a great job balancing it on the fourth slide, but I just want to question you on that. So this is the elementary population going out to 2930. There's the middle. And then the high. Now, one of the purposes of looking at this, as we think about this in terms of long-term planning, staffing implications for, say, the 25, I'll just pick the 25, 26 school year, are going to be different because even though the high school is dropping, the elementary begins to rise, but you staff those levels differently. So as the board begins to think, and the school system must think in terms of multi-year projections of budget, those enrollment figures, even while the enrollment itself may remain relatively stable across the pre-K12 plus system, where those kids are at which level is really something we have to consider because it's going to have a greater impact on staffing. A student, every student who takes five different teachers, six different teachers, seven different teachers at the high school as opposed to a teacher, a student at the elementary who takes one. Those are just things that we have to think about as we play these things out over time, and we plan long-term. This is the fourth slide in the sequence, and this puts it all in context. So the elementary's coming in is yellow, white. And they've all been trued up here for scale. Here's the middle. And then finally, the high school. So enrollment works in cycles. If we play this out another 10 years, if you start to take those increasing numbers, obviously, in the elementary level, they're going to play out across the middle and high and cause increases there. At the bottom of the slide, highlighted and bold there are the totals for each of those years, and over the course of this chart, there's a total population difference over the course of the years of less than 500 students, just under 500 students. So it kind of bottoms out in, what, 26, 27, 27, 28, but then starts to rise again at that point. So you can't finish a budget presentation without a couple pie charts. Here is the total budget in review. As you well know, the great majority of our, almost two-thirds of our budget is based on staff salaries. Between that and benefits, nearly four-fifths of our budget is based on, is based in, based in people, and as it should be. You know, we are, we are very much a human business, and those are not contradictory terms, by the way, human business. It just makes the business so much more fun. But that's ultimately what we are, and that's where we're going to see our money being spent, and that's where we've got to continue to support. The professional development that follows is really money to support people doing their jobs in the classrooms. The money we spend on maintenance is about improving the workspaces and the play spaces where our students and staff interact and engage in extracurricular activities. Ultimately, all of this is about improving the learning experiences for students in the Fairfield Public Schools. I'm sorry about that. So going back to that first series of slides, this puts the dollar amount next to the percentage increase or decrease, and you can see it put together here. So again, to highlight, we have a $7 million, a little over $7 million increase in total dollars for a 3.9% increase. This Thursday is the brown bag presentation for PTA. It'll happen in this room at 12:30. Then next Tuesday, the 14th, the special budget meeting will really examine, and this is just one way to kind of frame your thinking, the instructional side of central office. So this will really be about the instructional hallway as a special ed department. This will be about what happens in the classrooms. And then the following Tuesday, the 21st, is the time spent on the maintenance facilities, those types of things, the other side of our central office, as it were, with a board meeting and budget, hopefully budget approval on the 28th, and then on Friday, the 30th, to transmit all of our budget to the town. So before I get out of this chair, let me talk real quick about process. We have set up a Google document for board member questions, and I'm going to be sending you the link to that after tonight's meeting. You may not be able to immediately get into the document, and if you can't get into the document, this is partly the way your addresses work. The easiest and fastest way to address this and fix this is going to be for you to request access to the document. I'll get an email, and then I'll grant you access. I promise. So what we're going to do then is you're going to have an opportunity in that document, and again, Jim Burns really worked on this. It's created with dropdown menus. You don't even have to type your name. You can just find your name on the dropdown, put your name in. You can find the subary object, put that in, and then you're going to be able to find the page number of the budget and then ask your questions. This will allow us to do several things. One, we'll be able to sort your questions by the person who asked them, but as well as the area within the budget book. You'll then be able to see what other board members have asked, so you don't have to necessarily type the same question, or you might want to add, you know, an extension question, you'll be able to base it on questions that other people have already asked. We will then will put the answers back into the document. So we'll use this document to go back and forth between yourselves and the executive directors and others in central office who respond to your questions. So this is going to be a new way of doing this, but hopefully allow a quicker response, us able to better facilitate responses, and it'll be more open about what's going on, you know, between ourselves and yourselves in terms of who's asking what questions. And then we'll be able to document that, essentially, we'll be able to use that presentation in a similar format with other boards, but also be able to pass that on to other boards as a resource for them when they begin to look at our budget as well. Okay. Thank you very much.
We're not going, you know, going into the budget right now, but there's any just broad questions about the presentation for the superintendent or about the process moving forward, we will entertain those questions now. Ms. Lieber.
I'm just wondering if we could get some more information on related service providers, so our speech and language pathologist, OTPT, and what it costs to contract those services and what exactly we get for those services in terms of hours from each provider versus if we brought them in-house and what that would look like? And then also just thinking sort of more qualitatively in terms of oversight efficiencies, opportunity costs to having either them contracted or in-house, and then also like our ability to evaluate the quality of the service delivery.
Anyone else? Ms. Jacobson?
Just a process question. Latest time that you want people to be submitting their questions in, in terms to be able to get answers out and back in time for next week?
Any effort that can be made to get them in as soon as possible, but really, if they could be in, say, by Monday morning, that would allow us time to work on getting the answers. Usually what happens is that first set of questions or the lengthiest set of questions, people are exploring the book, so that would give us time on Monday and Tuesday. We've planned some common work sessions, but we also work independently, so people have to find time, and that really would be the, I think, probably the most helpful timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
To follow up on that, usually in the past, our agendas were set by, you know, code number or whatever, and I know, Mr. Cummings, you said during the presentation, you referenced a couple of the topics of the 14th versus the 21st, and I'll admit, I didn't, I wasn't paying attention because I thought it'd be in writing, but to follow up on Ms. Jacobson's question, how is that being handled so that we can be focused?
I'm looking right now, and I don't know if Ms. Montel has the page number, but it's in the budget book. It's in the calendar.
We can send that out, just for, on the next agenda, for what sections will be covered on the 14th and the 21st.
Do you happen to have the page number? So for the 14th, the targeted enhancements and drivers, instructional services, supplies, techs and materials, other purchase services, tuition, contracted services, and capital. And on the 21st, revenue, staff salaries, turnover, retirements, benefits, operations and maintenance of buildings, transportation and dues and fees.
Any other questions? Ms. Lieber?
Just want to make sure I send the questions for the right meeting. So target enhancements and drivers. Would the special education transportation, as indicated, as a particular budget impact, can be considered a driver in this context or no?
I would say that the transportation contract in general is a driver in this budget.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, as always, if you have any questions, just email Mr. Cummings over the next week. And again, Ms. Asa?
Just to clarify, so the board is using the Google doc, but in the past, the questions and answers have been consolidated and put online. Will that occur in some sort of manner?
Well, we'll really just use the document, you know, of the Word documents that used to go back and forth, the email, and then copying and pasting the email into a Word document. Yes, this will all be available to the public.
And I'm assuming there'll be a specialized budget page, as in the past. I know we've had some changes to the website, that all of the presentation, the budget, the answers to the questions will all be consolidated on the website.
That's correct. And tonight's presentation actually probably just went online. It was supposed to go online at 8:30.
Ms. Max Canell, do you have a question?
Just to ask, so I hate to think of members of the public requesting, I assume obviously that they would be on view only, but are those going to you for requesting access? Members of the public?
Oh, you, only the board members will get the invitation to the document to submit questions. Yeah.
This is really just instead of everybody emailing questions, just to have a consolidated, a uniformed format for which all of us to answer, ask our questions.
Right, I understand, I understand that, but in terms of the public being able to see it relatively live, or are they only going to see it as a static document stopped?
After the fact.
Yeah, it would be after the fact. Once we've completed those set of questions, then we'll publish that back out, start a second document. Then we can, what we can do is each of these documents is, when they're all completed, we can put them all back together and then resort it.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, and thank you to the staff who spent a good part of the holiday season focused on this. We appreciate your work and looking forward to hearing more about this budget in the coming weeks. Update in environmental testing at school field sites.
Okay. Our good news tonight is that the playscapes at Jennings were both reopened as of this morning, and the sun was out, so people were actually able to use them. There really was, you know, we've talked about this, but this has been clearly an endless process, particularly for the students and staff, parents at Jennings, and our apologies to them. Because of the nature of the work there, there was this iterative process, as we've talked about, about digging soil, having that soil tested, and then determining if more digging was required. And all of this had to be monitored and testing, results took a couple of weeks to come back and all that. And then on top of that, we got two different weekends of torrential rain when work was scheduled. So literally around both those playscapes, moats appeared, that really there was no place for the water to go down, so we really were reliant on evaporation to take care of it. It wasn't going back down to the grass or the soil, particularly on that playscape to the left. So that really delayed a lot of the work because they weren't able to then, when they had good weather, they couldn't go back in and start continuing to work because it was so underwater. So that's what took so long, once the testing began or the digging began back in November. But we did get the testing completed. The soil, all the soil that was put in place is, has been clean soil. It all was inspected before it was put into place. Some mulch was put back down. All the mulch came from safe stockpiles of mulch. So we have some work to do in restoration of that playscape. We talked about that. It's in the budget presentation tonight, in case you saw it, didn't see it, but we've got some work, money invested in the Jennings playscape. Again, particularly the ones to the left that needed some work anyway. But the important thing is that that playscape, those two playscapes are back. We really don't have any, I have no progress yet on McKinley, the test pits to the right of the building. They had to come back in and do some further testing. I still think they're still in process of getting those results. The Osborne Hill work around the southern south parking lot, that has not gone forward yet, and the Mill Hill work has not gone forward yet. So all those, those works or pieces of work are still on hold, and we're not yet set for actual remediation of that. And then finally, the Fairfield Ludlow. We've had staff start moving back into that section of the building, but we are still waiting for reports. We are waiting on two reports at this point. One is the OSHA report from the testing they did. They had a meeting with Mr. Papa George, Mr. Hats, Ms. DC, and Mr. Smoller back before the holidays, and they verbally shared their results, but we're waiting for the actual report that we can share with the community around what they found, and they did find things that we had to remediate. I want to be clear about that, and we've been doing that work. And then the other thing we're waiting on is there's secondary report from Woodard and Kern. If you remember, we got the initial report from Woodard and Kern, who identified areas that they found that needed to be fixed. Based on that report, work was done in the second, on the first level there, that we talked in a previous meeting about the steam pipe leaks. We talked about wallboard issues and the gym teacher office that needed to, PE teacher's office that needed to be remediated. That work has been done, but they then came back in to assess that that work was effective, and we're waiting for that report as well. And as soon as we have these reports, we're going to share them with everyone, but again, we're waiting for the actual physical copies of the reports. And we continue to monitor the situation, and we've got more work that's still, there's more testing we want to conduct at Fairfield Ludlow, and we're in the process of planning that as well. So that will continue to be a process.
Any questions about Ludlow or the Fields? Mr. Peterson?
All right, thanks. Very excited about the Jennings playgrounds being back.
Hi, thanks. Very excited about the Jennings playgrounds being back online, and I'm sure the school community is as well. I know it's a big load off of everyone's minds. In your note to us, you and to the parents of that community, you mentioned that they're closing off a ramp near the left side. Is that the driveway leading up to Woods?
Excuse me, the placecape to the left is the one closer to Woods. There's a ramp there that, that is now not, not as supportive as it needs to be. And so we're going to close that ramp off until we can provide a more appropriate repair for it.
So it's a ramp giving access to the playground. You're not talking about the driveway access to the back of that goes down?
No, it is a ramp on the placecape itself.
All right, that's all I need to know. Thanks.
Ms. Jacobson?
I was just wondering if we had been given a timeline on either McKinley or Mill Hill. I know you said it hadn't started, but I was just worried if you had any other information about possible timing on that at this time.
No, I've not heard. I know that the, those three work sites are part of the town work that's being done in addition to the work that's happening at the parks and things. So we're, been relying, and Mr. Papa George, I don't know if you've heard anything more recent than I have, but, and if you have, please come up and share it. And you are. Thank you.
So in the meeting I had last week with the town, McKinley and Mill Hill are still being tested, so there's still some timeline there. For the Osborne Hill front parking lot area, we are actually pushing to get that done over the February recess, starting on the 14th, when the kids have a half day, and then we have that long weekend. So as long as everything falls into place and a remediation plan is presented and approved, then we should be able to get that done within that time period. They were able to determine that it's only about a .5 dig, so it's only about .5 inches. They have to dig down below dirt, and they're trying to determine how far off the playground they have to, off the parking lot they have to go, but they don't believe it's going to be far at all. So it is a high level, but they don't believe it's a lot to do, just a long period, long stretch to do on both sides. But they are targeting the 14th of February.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Papa George, thank you for your work on this, and thank you to the Jennings community for their patience since September. We were all very happy to get that email, hearing that those placecapes were opened. Approval of the 2020, 2021 capital projects. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2020, 2021 capital projects. Kind of a motion, Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Lieber. Mr. Cummings, do you have any additional comments on this, or anything changed since our last meeting?
I'm searching my memory. No, I don't believe anything has changed. What's that? Oh, it did. Yeah, see, I knew I couldn't rely on my memory.
I'm sorry. It was a minor change. When we presented the non-reoccurring to the town, they asked us to move one of our non-reoccurring projects to a capital project, which would be the Ward High School air conditioning in the cafeteria, the $1.5 million request. So you've seen it already, you'll just see it in a different format. Instead of being in a non-reoccurring book, it'll present to the town as a capital at this point, because it's over that $1 million threshold.
Any, Ms. Teresa?
So our total dollar amount expenditure is the same, it's just in different categories?
Just in different categories now, correct.
Does that allow us to put something else into non-reoccurring, or they don't want us going over that cap?
They want us to stay at where we were because it's the waterfall cap that we had. They're just shifting where the money would come through. So basically down to where they're going to bond it out of, as a higher amount. It's at the, because that came in, originally it was at a, it was under $1 million, but after having engineers look at it, and when it originally went into the non-reoccurring book, it was under $1 million. But after engineers looked at it and we were able to come up with better, closer numbers to what the project will actually cost, it came in higher than expected and came in at that 1.5, which we had left it in a non-reoccurring at the time of the capital summit, but getting ready for the non-reoccurring, which will go before the Board of Selectment on the 21st of this month, we were reached out by the town CFO and asked to move that project from one book to the other.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, was more of that increase due to duct work that we discussed, or?
Due to the duck work and the type of system, because when we actually removed ceiling tiles, it was discovered, kind of like Sherman, there's not a lot of room or clearance above the existing ceiling now. So there's a couple of different options as to how the duck work could run, whether it be on the roof or exposed. So they're looking at different options at that point. I don't know where the original number came from. It was before my time here, so that's why we worked with the engineers to come up with a better price.
Okay, so we're guessing at the price?
No, that's, I don't know where the previous price came from, but we had an engineer come out and put a dollar figure on the actual cost of it. That's the number I'm moving forwards with, which is the 1.5.
Okay, and that number of the 1.5, you still are to determine what type of duct work, but you feel that it will fall within that?
It will fall within that type. We may end up using multiple types depending on the room and the area. As you know, it's got a hallway through it, so there's one section that we could use one type, another section we, and may end up using a second type. But based on what the engineers were able to determine, size-wise, load size, all that, they are comfortable with the 1.5 as the number for this project.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Just to piggyback on that, it sounds like the project has added a bit of complexity. I assume that the schedule would still be completed over the summer break.
That is correct.
So that it's not going to, it's not going to impact the schedule at all?
It should not impact the schedule at all. We are working with an engineer firm to get that all lined up and timeline.
Great, thanks.
Mrs. Max Canely?
And just to reiterate something just said, but this gets back to a point Mrs. Gerber had made a few months ago regarding the need to update those numbers, those financials on that waterfall, that we are using some numbers that are extremely old, sourcing unknown, and we're trying to rely on that. And so just as a reminder, here's a perfect snapshot example of why we need that done.
Give your hand up. So for the moving from capital non-reoccurring, that's really nothing that we need to take action on. That's just going to be how the town chooses to move it forward.
Correct. I just wanted you guys to be aware.
And for the public, just in terms of, can we get an update on the state reimbursement, or what we've learned about the state for St. Emory's?
So on December 17th, our construction manager went up and met with the state. They had a lot of information and a lot of different ways we can approach this project. We are working to pull the numbers together. We've implored Silver Petroselli, who's in charge of the Mill Hill project at this point, to assist with pulling the numbers together to make sure we're going down the correct route, which way we're going to go. We've also, at that meeting, found out the necessary requirements to have the purchase price of the building put into a reimbursable project. Part of that was to have two independent appraisals done of the building. We actually have that already, because we did one way back when we started talking about it, and St. Emory's also did their own. So we do have those two. The other part of that is to officially invite the state down to tour that building. Excuse me. So we've, we're in that process now. We want to get them down to tour it so that we can move along with this process. We don't want it to stop, so that's why we're pushing through, and you'll see the two ed specs we're going to ask you guys to approve tonight as well, so that we can keep this project moving, even though there may be some changes in the future based on what we determine is the best route with the state and the reimbursement rates.
Ms. Teresa?
Mr. Papa George, you can tell me to hold off on this if you, if we're going to cover it under the ed specs, but there were a couple of items outstanding that we discussed at the last meeting regard, around that number that is in there for this motion. Can you touch on a couple of those things that we talked about?
I know we talked about adding the air conditioning and the fresh air systems to the building. So we are going to ask you guys to approve the ed spec as it was, as a roof ed spec for both Osborne and Walter Fitzgerald. We may come back with, to you with the Walter Fitzgerald ed spec as an addendum and ask you to approve the updated version of it. But we don't want to slow the project down by not approving to move forwards with these two. The, the big driver for that was the air conditioning, as you said. We don't have those numbers yet. We've reached out to an engineering company, and we should have them by the end of this week. They were actually out just after the holiday, but because of the holidays, they were slowed in getting their proposal. The other option that the state put on the table to us is to do a as-new renovation, which means we would cover the entire building and not just the necessary improvements. So we would have to go above and beyond what we originally planned on doing. We'd have to make it ADA compliant, so we'd have to put in an elevator to the second floor. We'd have to update the bathrooms. They'd probably, if it's a light new construction, even though the boilers are in decent shape, they would want to see them replaced as well. So there's multiple options that we have after meeting with the town, after meeting with the state. So that's why we're, we're holding off now, because we're trying to identify what the best cost-effective way to move forwards is, and what the state would want based on what project we decide to go, which route we decide to go, what the ed spec should spell out for the state to see.
Okay, and I had also asked about the structural engineering.
We have, we actually have reached out to a structural engineer who's done work for the town before. He gave us a proposal to do, and it's, they're calling it an initial evaluation. He says they will not cut into roofing structures or cause damage anywhere, but they will do an evaluation of the building to tell us it's structural. Reaching out to him, we did that. We also have been working with John Angel from Angel Realty to come up with an official proposal for you guys to see, for us to offer to the Bridgeport Archdiocese, as this is our price, this is our reason, and these are contingencies. And some of the contingencies would be environmental along with structural.
Okay, so this funding would cover, you're saying will cover that initial structural engineering outer envelope look?
Yes. We, actually not this funding. We are looking to do that before we even make the proposal. So we would do that out of operating budgets from this year.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy to hear that.
Anybody else? Mrs. Jacobson?
Can you just give us an idea, I know you're working on the purchase agreement, but do we have a timeline on that? Because we're moving forward with the ed specs, we're moving forward with these discussions. So I'm just curious when we're getting to the documentation on the purchase.
I'm hoping to have it by the end of this week, early next week. The delay was the engineer getting back to us with the proposal. So now that we have that in hand, we were able to send that over. We've provided Angel Commercial with all of our projects and costs so that they can help prepare an actual document for an actual cost of the building.
Ms. Jacobson?
And just one last question. So you're going to price out the project as a build like new and a renovation and see which one comes out better?
Correct.
Right, because I assume there's different reimbursement rates from the state depending on what you're doing, correct?
Depending on what we're doing, yes. If we're going to do projects or if we're going to do it like new, as, I don't know if you're aware, but if we do a like-new renovation, which the state pushed for a long time for nobody to do it, they didn't want to see them come across their table. With this building, they actually said, made the recommendation, we do that. Being behind their, their thinking behind that is, if you do a like-new renovation, they will not anticipate, they will not see a project for 20 years. So we will not get any reimbursement for anything else done in that building over the next 20. So that's why they're kind of pushing. It's not a huge building, so they think the upfront number may be better for them to offer it this way and then not have to worry about it.
Ms. Jacobson?
Just on the Osborne Hill project, we had talked about solar last time. Can you just give us an update on what's happening with that?
Yes, so we did reach out to the solar company, and they have not put a number on what they're willing to do for us. However, reaching out to them and talking to them and talking to the town, we don't know if it's the best approach at this point to ask them to participate in the roof replacement, because in the, at the end of the day, we get reimbursed a percentage from the state for doing the roof job. So if we get funding from another source such as the solar, it would reduce the cost, which would reduce the reimbursement rate. But at the end of the day, we'd be paying for the roof, the part that the solar company put in. So if the solar gives us a nine cents, roughly a nine cents PPM, if we ask them to participate in the roof replacement, they may come in and say, okay, but your PPM is going to be 14 cents now. So at the end of the day, we'd still be paying for it. So we're thinking at this point it may be worth it just to do the full project and ask the state for the reimbursement rate, rather than trying to reimburse off of a reduced rate that we're going to pay for long-term.
Thank you. Any other questions? So just to clarify for St. Emory's, you know, we're moving forward on this, but this is very much somewhat of a unique situation in that we're talking about a renovation of a building that we do not yet own. And as we get more information and move forward, there is a good chance that you will be back before us for additional clarification on this project.
Yes, we will clarify more as more information comes in. Just to clarify too, we will not do any renovation or additions or improvements to this building until we have the signed deed to the building. So we're not planning on renovating and purchasing. We're planning on purchasing and then renovating the building. We won't be doing any work if something were to fall through. I was actually informed today, just so you are all aware, that the Bridgeport Archdiocese, the two churches in town combined on January 2nd became official, and they have a new leadership in there. So the attorney that we speak to there said, let me know today that she is going to be meeting with their new leadership to even confirm that they are still following the same path and are still interested in selling the building. So this, unfortunately, after January 2nd could come back and they could say, we've changed our mind, we're not doing that. At which time, we will provide them with the list of improvements that we feel need to be done.
Okay, Mrs. Gerber?
And also, there are going to be chores of St. Emory's for members of the other town bodies throughout this month. So just in terms of them being brought up to speed as to what the site is like, what we're looking to do, they're, they will be involved in that so that if and when it comes to them in whatever form it ends up coming to them, they will have already seen the building and will better understand what we're asking for.
Yes, we're trying to be as clear, clear as possible. We had our first meeting at 5 o'clock tonight there, our first tour was 5 o'clock tonight. We have a tour set up every Tuesday at 5 o'clock through this month, and we actually just opened up, we have Saturday at 9:00 AM, this coming Saturday at 9:00 AM, for those who can't make it during the week.
Thank you.
Ms. Teresa?
Piggybacking on that, 5 o'clock on a Tuesday is very, very, very difficult for a lot of people. I would hope that we could figure out a way to try and entice as many elected officials in town to come view this property, because I think they will have their eyes opened. I would suggest, I'm happy to hear about the Saturday, but based on the response, if we need to, I would try and do another tour outside of a 5:00 PM weeknight. And maybe, hopefully, we can get creative on how to reach out to leadership from both parties to encourage all elected officials to come. If, I'm sure some of that's been done already, but I just want to reiterate, and to any public watching that isn't elected official, I would really urge you come out and see this property.
Just, I think there was, I saw a sign-up sheet today. I think there was about 14 representatives from different budgets and different boards already on it. If that turns out to be an issue and there's more people that want to see it and that time isn't convenient, I'll be more than happy to open it up to other dates and times. The, the only request that we were aware of so far was the Saturday, so we opened that up. We haven't had any other requests at this point.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to follow up with an email on that.
Mrs. Max Canely?
And just to that point, I just want to thank, because I believe you had a tour today with
Yes.
Three non-Board of Ed members?
Well, three non-
Three non-Board of Ed members, so two RTM members and one Board of Finance. So, you know, thanks to them for you taking advantage of this offer. I think it's, I ran into one of them, and it was extremely eye-opening for her to have seen what she saw. And, you know, she was very appreciative of the time. And just, again, for anybody listening, please get down there to see, because it just, it completely colors the conversation and gives them a much greater context. So thank you for being as flexible as you are being.
Ms. Teresa?
I just want to add one thing, and I don't know, because I wasn't aware of the meeting tonight, but if there isn't, I would highly encourage Mr. Cummings having some sort of administrator at these tours, because I'm guessing there may be programmatic questions that come up, that if there's somebody there that's familiar that could touch to answer those while they're in the building. Because I know when we toured them, there were a lot of good questions that had to do with the actual programs and where they are in the building. And if someone like that's not present, I'm afraid that might get lost.
So a few of those questions did come up tonight, so what I encourage them to do is to reach out via email to Mr. Mancusi, who can either answer them or point them in the right direction.
Okay, but if we can try and get somebody there at the tour- Okay, but if we can try and get somebody there at the tour, please do your best because having the answers while the iron's hot is, can be very beneficial.
Let me just say, I, I will be going. I didn't go tonight because we had a policy committee meeting, but I will be attending these, these, these tours. Well, oh, good, good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Yep. Yeah, well, I would invite you to stay there, but we have to go to the public. If any members of the public would like to give comment before the board votes on this action item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, back to the board. That the Board of Education approved the 2020-2021 Capitol Projects. All in favor? Mr. Rotelli, Ms. Pitco, Ms. Sleeper, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Caneli, Mr. Peterson. Motion passes 9-0. Mr. Papa George, I invite you back up for an update on the Maintenance Department move.
So, the update on the Maintenance Department move is that the office areas have been, the Maintenance Department itself has been moved into the building. We are currently no longer occupying 418 Meadow Street as of the first of the month. The keys have been turned over to the landlord, and we are out of there, even though we left a basketball pole in the basement for some reason, but it was picked up. So, we're, we're in good shape. As for the actual move, the physical site at 3400 Fairfield Avenue, it's been framed out and wired. We were, we reached out for an electrical inspection just before the holidays. We were told the lead time for electrical inspections is eight to nine weeks. So, we're waiting for an inspection. However, working with the city and the economic developer, we were able to push that timeline up, and we have an electrical inspection at 12:00 noon on Thursday of this week. Once we have that done, we will get our framing inspection, and then we will be able to start sheet rocking and putting the guys into their homes instead of working out of boxes. But, we are currently there and working out of boxes.
And, Ms. Peterson?
And what about the Transportation Department?
The Transportation Department has not been moved yet because a lot of the area being framed out and built will be their homes. So, they are still currently at the location where they are. We don't want to move them, obviously, when the buses are on the road. So, we're looking at dates. We had originally picked a date in January that would work because it was a long weekend. However, we've, because of the inspection delays and the backup delays, we are looking at the February 14th move at this point because it's a long weekend and we can do, start it, according to Steve from Transportation, we can start on that Thursday afternoon because it's a half-day, and we can move Friday and Saturday and hopefully have them in. Another delay on that, I shouldn't say delay, but something that we are working with is we have to get the radio system in and tested before they move over so that we are confident that there will be no communication gaps when the buses are on the road.
And what's the status of the heat at the current transportation location?
The heat currently is running over there. The, our in-house maintenance guys have, I'm not even exactly sure how they've done it, but they have some heat rolling in there. We also have backup electric heaters if need be. We put two on-site, and we have more at the maintenance facility if need be.
Great, thanks.
Ms. Rasa?
Touching on Mr. Peterson and Transportation, I, I was happy to get to see the building before the holidays and was very pleased with the build-out progress that your crew had done thus far. And just a couple of quick questions. First, though, with Transportation, as long as they do have some heat source, I would just urge that we not rush moving them. And if, if they can make do in the trailer until we get it right, I think that's a good move, especially with what you just touched on with the radios and whatnot. But, what about fiber optic? That was delayed, but you said that there was a cable modem or something put in there. So, are the ma, is the maintenance staff able to, I know they're out of boxes, but are they able to communicate?
Yes, they have, they have temporary phone systems set up there, which is an old analog system. They also, we actually took the phone lines that go into the old Maintenance Department on the new phone system and have them rolled to their cell phone. So, if you call their direct extension, you're getting them, but you're getting them on their cell phone. We also have a cable modem working in there, so that our secretary and our support staff is able to work. They're online, they're filling out forms, they're entering work orders and following through. So, there's no, no absence of work being done there because of that delay. The fiber, yes, there was a miscommunication, I believe, between IT and the actual company that runs it for us, and they delayed putting, the company delayed putting the ticket in, which is why we're at a delay now, but we are still pushing to get that done as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Max Caneli?
Believe it or not, I did get emailed a question about the whole Meadow Street situation, and I just wanted to clarify once and for all and definitively that the whole situation in June with the Board of Ed, that we did not vote on that at ever, that this board had never taken a stance on staying in that building. And I'm saying, because I had to answer it by email just recently, and so I wanted to just get the confirmation here publicly that that has never taken place and that as soon as we were asked to move, we have moved, I think relatively quickly. I'm thrilled that this has gone as well as it has, and so thank you to you and to all of the, the people who have made this move possible. But, again, just wanted to clarify that for the public because apparently there's still some thoughts out there about this. I think we're trying to move positively forward. I just think it, it's worth saying one last time.
This board did not vote to stay at Meadow Street or specifically, there was not a discussion item of this board that we voted on. Does anybody have anything to add to that? And I agree, it's, I'm very happy to hear that we are out of there and that we are moving forward. Again, thanking you a lot for, you've been very busy on a lot of different projects, Mr. Papa George, and I thank you and your staff for really, for your thoroughness and for really just moving all of these very important items forward. We have to go to the public, but you can stay there just in case some-
The next.
The next one. Well, we're going to go to the public soon, but stay there. Approval of the Osborne Hill Educational Specifications. Recommended motion, the Board of Education approve the Osborne Hill Educational Specifications for the roof project. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Sleeper. Any discussion, questions? Okay, seeing none. This is a voting item, so we're going to go to the public. If any members of the public would like to give comment on this, I invite you to come Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Pitco, Ms. Sleeper, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Caneli, Mr. Peterson. Motion passes 9-0. Approval of the Walter Fitzgerald Campus Educational Specifications. Recommended motion, the Board of Education approve the Walter Fitzgerald Campus Educational Specifications for the roof project. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Pitco. Any discussion, questions? Mrs. Max Caneli?
Just hoping someone could speak to, and obviously it was already just brought up, but exactly what is the timeline for a project like this? You know, we, we always usually use to speak in terms of it needs to be done by this time, so backing out from there, here's what needs to happen, but this one has the added wrinkle of, it involves a property we don't own. So, could someone just speak to the timeline for this and what needs to happen and?
So, we would have, if, for applying for reimbursement for this project, which is why we're doing the ed spec, we would have to have it to the state before, applied with all their required approvals and checkoff and minutes from meetings by the June deadline. So, that's why we're asking to move this forwards more. We can add and amend it with that moving forwards. This roof in particular, because the ed spec focuses on the roof, is something we would like to move along as quickly as possible because it's something we could begin and get on the records and the, the books of the roofing contractors that are available. It has to go out to bid, so there's still a process in it that we have to do. And it's, I don't want to say a small roof, but it's smaller than some of our standard roofs. So, it's something we could actually begin working on before the summer break if possible so that when we look at the Osborne roof, when that one goes out to bid, that's going to be an entire summer project. So, we probably have someone focusing on that. I don't know if both, the contractor will award both bids for both roofs, but it's a possibility. So, we're trying to move it along as quickly as possible. I don't know if that answered your-
So, in all of these changes, you know, in terms of everyone who has to have a, you know, a finger in the pie on this and approving everything, et cetera, that's what I'm concerned to you. Are you worried at all about the June deadline considering everything that has to happen between now and that time?
No, if, if we do have minutes or updates to the ed spec, we hope to have them within this month. It shouldn't go out longer and longer. It's just, we don't have them at this point because we've just gotten Silver Petroselli involved, because we just got the information from the state of which direction they wanted us to take on this. So, that's why we may have something, but we want to keep it moving. That's why we're asking for the clarification.
I, I just want to add that the Finance Committee met this morning, and one of the things that we're going to do at our next meeting is lay out a timeline related to both what Mr. Papa George is speaking to, but also our interactions with other bodies in town in terms of determining what meetings are already on the calendar and when we have to get certain things to those, to those committees, those boards in order to make sure that we've crossed everything to happen to meet that, that June deadline for the state. Yep.
And we had, we, Mr. Cummings and I, met with Ms. Cupcheck. She is aware of this project and, you know, moving forward with it and some of the challenges just in terms of the fact that the building is not yet purchased and that it's not necessarily as straight a line as some of our past building projects. Ms. Jacobson, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, just quickly, so I know that this is only for the roof, but when we do finally get the rest of the ed spec with all the other items that we want to do to the building once we own it, are you looking to do that next summer too, or is that going to be the following year?
We're, we're looking to do it as a single-phase project, but we want to phase, we're going to have to phase it. There's stuff that we can do during the school year, some minor things here and there, but there's also larger projects like the abatement of the building. So, with the flooring and the asbestos tiling and that type of stuff, that can't be done, obviously, when there's school in session because of the requirements. So, we can phase it out the best we can based on that, but we're trying to identify, originally we were saying phase one, possibly a phase two, and now we're looking at a single phase, but phased within that single project.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rasa?
Just to clarify, there will be multiple phases. Phase one includes what we're voting on. Phase two, in theory, would be HVAC and other things down the road, correct?
What the state is looking at it and what we're working with Silver Petroselli now is to know, to identify it as a single project, which would include the HVAC. All the listed items you saw originally on that spreadsheet, plus the HVAC, plus the ADA improvements that were needed. If you remember, the, we had the $5 million earmarked for this project, but if you remember the breakdown, there was a 1.2, I believe, or 1.3 contingency for this project as well. So, we're, we're working with Silver Petroselli to see how much of an as-built building we can get in under that $5 million mark that we had originally had on the waterfall. If we're close, we're going to hopefully be able to adjust that accordingly, but we're trying to get it in right at that $5 million. So, we are trying to do a single-phase building with everything included is the way the state is pushing us to go.
So, where does that put us financially then if we're only approving, just to be clear, if, if we're going for X amount of dollars, but what you're talking about is going to add substantially more than what a contingency would be?
We're hoping to get it in under the contingency. That's because it's 25,000-square-foot building, we're hoping that within that contingency we can do the added improvements that the state is looking for us to do. We're hoping not to have to come back to you and say we need additional funding for this project is our ultimate goal.
So, so you're talking HVAC, elevator?
HVAC, elevator, bathroom improvements, and then everything you saw on the list.
And we're talking a million and a half for Ward's HVAC, small project?
Correct.
But, you're saying we're going to be able to HVAC that whole school, add an elevator and everything else for that contingency? I just, seems a little-
It's, it's going to be close. That's why we are working with Silver Petroselli to get actual numbers and get closer to what we need. So, yes, it is going to be close, and we may have to come back to you and say we need additional funding to present to the town, but we're trying not to do that. We're working with engineers, we're working with contractors to figure out best pricing, best practice, and where we can fit in and what we can fit in.
Seeing none, go to the public. If any members of the public would like to speak to the approval of the Walter Fitzgerald ed specs, please come forward. Seeing none, to the board, all in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Sleeper, Ms. Gerber, Ms. Pitco, Ms. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Caneli, Mr. Peterson. Motion passes 9-0. First reading of policy, 2132 Central Office Administration. Mrs. Max Caneli?
As you can see in enclosure number two, the titles that have been struck in red are from 2008, so we're already several iterations past this. So, it just seemed to make sense, and obviously tonight's budget presentation presents ample evidence of why we don't want to try to delineate who, what the various titles are. So, you can see the language that we have there. Any questions? I invite them before the last meeting in January when we'll be voting on this, or if there are any questions now.
Does anybody have any questions, Mrs. Max Caneli? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Moving on, approval of minutes. That the Board of Education approve the December 10th, 2019 Special Organizational and Regular Meeting Minutes. Got a motion, Mrs. Gerber, second, Mrs. Jacobson. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, all in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Sleeper, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Caneli, Mr. Peterson, all opposed. Abstentions? Ms. Pitco, motion passes 8-0-1. Superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm going to give an update on the District Improvement Plan, planning. We have scheduled, we have ready to go on the 14th of January, essentially the conducting of a staff survey that will happen at all of our schools in the course of the day. It may happen for some of the schools in the morning, and for others it might work better in the afternoon. But, we're going to work with the District Leadership Team this Thursday, the 9th, to go through that survey, have them actually engage in the work so that they can lead the work at the buildings. At most, I think this, this process will take a couple hours on the 14th. Then, we've got planned, and I'm working on letters for, for these, for these different groups, but we've got planned dates on the calendar for a parent meeting to do the same type of work. And then, we've just established dates for a meeting in the second week of March to do this with elected town officials as well. So, we're putting the, the dates on the calendar for this work to essentially collect the information, to collect the feedback, to collect the input for the, on the current District Improvement Plan and where people think that the district needs to go in its next, next series of, of work. At the same time, at the end of this month, we'll be, we're collecting, in the process of collecting names right now from staff to be part of the Steering Committee, and we'll be holding our first meeting with them to establish the work that they're going to do as they begin to go through the results of the surveys that we conduct with, with these different constituencies. And then, essentially starting to lay out the parameters of, of their tasks. I've, I've got, I've bought a book for everybody to read, including members of the board, around this work. It's short, it's like 80 pages. It won't take you no time at all, and I won't even give it to you after budget. But, essentially, it's, it's a monograph that, that really will unite the people who are leading the work around this and, and give them some, some frame of thinking for how they're going to approach the District Improvement Plan. So, that's really where we are. We're in the process of getting things on the calendar, and then I'm really looking forward to the, to the work. And the weather forecast right now looks pretty good for the 14th, because I have to say it. So, I'm very optimistic. It's a budget, I'm very, very positive. So, we're looking forward to the 14th and really getting that impact, and we're going to get a lot of information then, begin to go through that. So, that's going to be really, really great to see and, and give us the direction on where we go next.
Any questions for Mr. Cummings, Mrs. Max Caneli?
Just briefly, I was wondering, what is the- Just briefly, I was wondering, what is the, the, parents I could see, but what was the nature of the feedback you're looking for from other elected officials?
I think what we want to make sure that we're doing, one, is getting their sense of where the district is, where they see the district going. One of the things, you know, the SWAT analysis that our staff would be engaged in and the parents would be engaged in, you know, is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I don't think that, at this point, I'm not thinking that the elected officials would engage in that full process, but more, what I'm thinking is, based on the feedback we've already collected, asking them to reflect on that, to see if, if they bring a different angle to it, and to get their, their sense of what, of how that data relates to their own experiences, I suppose. And also, I think it's an opportunity to involve them now in the process of what we're getting, so that they understand where this eventually may wind up. You know, I know that there's other factors in town, that we're working with other constituencies, constituencies in town that are looking at long-term planning for the town. This is not meant to rival that, this is clearly district-focused, but I think it's an opportunity for them to see where our stakeholders, people personally invested in the school system, see it. And it's a window into our work that they may not really often get an opportunity to see. So, it's going to work really, I see this as rightfully a two-way street, that, that meeting.
And just to piggyback on that, because we discussed it, from the Board, I think that we talked about wanting to build, build communication, more collaboration with town officials, and not necessarily to delegate our work and our responsibility to other town officials, but the work that we do could have budget implications later on, and being that budgets are a reflection of our values, we want to get as many stakeholders to be part of the conversation in the planning stages. Ms. Jacobson?
I was wondering if you were planning on doing any student focus groups at any point?
Thank you for asking. That would be my intention. I know the headmasters had to leave, but certainly at the high school level, a minimum. What we're going to do at the DLT Thursday is, it's not that it's necessarily a complicated process, but we'll be able to train the administrators in running this protocol. So, at that point, it can be done at the school level with focus groups. And I think, you know, when we think about the fact that this is a five-year plan, I'd like to include the middle school students in it as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Cummings? Committee liaison reports? Does anybody have any? Nope. Mrs. Max Canelli.
Just for the Board, where, and obviously, we already have this, not to look ahead to next year's budget already, but one topic that is coming up in policy is looking at getting more information, for example, regarding the whole athletic program of the district in terms of waterfall schedule for uniforms, of investment, investing in the maintenance of fields, et cetera, equipment, what have you, and that this is something that we're hoping to be, okay, I always think we can do a one-and-done, but at the end of January, so that'll be coming before the Board in February, if we are able to meet that timeline. Obviously, it would not be in time for this year's budget, but we would hope that it's something that would factor into the next school year. You know, it may also pull in the Finance Committee in terms of boiling down, really, you know, what kind of information we're looking for. But I know at varying points, different members of the Board have received questions from the public regarding athletics, whether it's who's got a scoreboard, who's got a newer scoreboard, the condition of fields, the condition of uniforms, et cetera, and I just wanted to update the Board that that is something that we're looking at right now.
Thank you. Ms. Lieber.
So, we are going to, in the Finance Committee, continue to look at signage and brainstorm, hopefully, some, a new approach, because the initiative we tried last year didn't bring in the revenue we had hoped, to say the least. And so, if anybody out there watching has ideas about how to engage with the community to partner with local businesses, whatever it may be, around signage in our fields, and then also we'll be working with the Policy Committee and possibly brainstorming about what we could be doing with that revenue. So, it's closely related to, I think, your athletics conversation. And then, also, just to reiterate for the public that, in the Finance Committee, we will be talking about the ongoing process of the Walter Fitzgerald Campus purchase and construction, Ed Spec timeline, and keeping a close eye on that evolving budget.
Any emails? Open board comment? Mr. Peterson?
I just want to give a shout-out to the High School Scholarship Foundation of Fairfield. If you're a parent or connected or former donor, you've probably gotten a fundraising letter from them recently. For people who don't know, it's such a fantastic organization. They've been around for more than 30 years now. They've given out, I think, more than 3,000 scholarships every year. You know, dozens of kids at both high schools are awarded, all high schools are awarded scholarships of, you know, varying sizes and, and shapes. It's really, it's a fantastic organization, and for anyone who is interested in, in participating or making a donation, you can visit them at fairfieldscholarshipfoundation.org.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mrs. Max Canelli.
Mrs. Max Canelli.
I just thought, wanted to update the audience and the Board members, in case they were interested, that Ken Jennings won on day one. So, for anyone following Jeopardy.
Oh, okay, okay. Ms. Jacobson.
Nothing, just a quick reminder that the legislative session will start early in February, so I'm just throwing it out there that you'll probably start, you know, I'll be keeping watch for things that may come up that impact the district or the town in any way. So, start getting emails from me if that's the case.
And I just want to give a shout-out to the music departments at the high schools for both Caroline and Candlelight. It is always a high point of the holiday seasons. Any, Mr. Peterson?
Sorry, one more thing. I don't, I don't know who to thank for the candies.
That would be me. I forgot them.
Thank you.
Around the holidays, so Happy New Year to you all. Any other, Ms. Pitco?
Anybody want a munchkin?
Any other non-food-related open board comment? Seeing none, public comment? We invite any members of the public now to give comment on agenda items. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Rotelli, all in favor? Oh, it's unanimous. We are adjourned.